Okay, today is Wednesday, November 30th, 2013. The time is 1:00 P.M. What's that?
October 30th.
Well, I asked the month and I asked the day. Or I asked the year and the day, I didn't ask the month. So it's October 30th?
Yes.
Oh, that's right, Halloween coming up. Okay, today is October 30th, 2013. The time is 1:00 P.M. The meeting of Montague County Commission is called to order. Would everyone please rise for a moment of silent meditation and pledge to the flag? Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We were expecting a large crowd, but well, maybe they're starting to come in now.
We don't have the public hearings until 1:30, so...
Well, okay, so that's what that is, all right. Okay, Diana.
Consent and approval today. We have 32 exonerations, $9,378.12 for tax years 2012-2015. The fiduciary order is on October 30th. Also, statement of services rendered by Lynn Crane, George Armstead, as senior staffer of fiduciary commissioners, minutes of September 4 and September 11. Purchase orders and handouts through General County Fund, $60,974.99. Full set is $20,208.37. 911 cash, $2,005.20.91. Kemp monthly, $125.49. Law enforcement, orbiture, $3,500. Mason Dixon, $367.02. Chestnut Ridge Park, $2,0235.95. Payroll, $403.670.78. For total, $495.598.07. Also have one budget revision. This requires state auditor's approval. This is actually was taken by the commission where you change the three part-time employees to full-time security officers. Necessary funds have been moved into budget 703. Be all in our review to take care of that.
Move for approval. Second.
Have a motion in the second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Renetta.
I have a request for reimbursement today, the HUD grant for an MEYSP. $785.40 for the month of September 2013.
Move for approval. Second.
Have a motion in the second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Thank you, Renetta. Okay, Patrick Whaley. Introduction to my new employee. You can come on up and... He's the director of Youth Services Center. We started that since Kerry complained about it.
Hey, how you doing?
This is Commissioner Callan Bloom Bartolo. Patrick Whaley, Director of Youth Services Center. You got a presentation?
Yes, Captain Donovan was hired recently as our service worker. She'll be starting here pretty soon. And can you present her to the board?
Nice to meet you.
Nice meeting you. Have a motion to accept it.
Move for acceptance. Second.
A motion in the second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Welcome aboard, glad to have you.
And just to show some history, I started the Youth Services Center back with Tony Barrell, Judge Starcher, and one other individual. And I'm adamant that we keep that program and hope we expand it so we can help the youth. So I appreciate everything you do.
Thank you.
And I will definitely, and also I'm still on the board. Unless, unless superintendent takes me off of that, too. Thank you.
Okay. Mike Wolf. Is Mike here?
No, he's not here. There were two days now to please to work out. And that day I think he was heartbroken from that today, so.
So we delayed that till next week?
Yes.
Okay. Public hearing's not till 1:30. I guess we can move on down. Correspondents, request for funding fire hydrants from Pleasant Valley PSD.
I have a request from the Pleasant Valley PSD for the installation of one fire hydrant and repairs to the others totaling $12,202,000. So that could be funded through the 7/13 line item.
Move for approval. Second.
Have a motion in the second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Request from Sheriff Kizner, funding for investigation of possible grave sites. Sheriff, are you here? Callie, you gonna fill in?
You got a hearing.
Oh, Gary's gonna fill in?
I've got a hearing. The chief, wait, he's sending, Chief Palmer.
Okay.
Oh, okay. He will wait in, will...
I'm sorry I came here.
We'll wait on this, Chief Palmer.
Oh, okay. That's fine.
I can explain if they can probably bill you in.
Well, I heard him on the news.
Okay. This is an ongoing investigation. This is a company that will visit the site, do some excavating, likely to determine if there are graves on this particular, um, cost.
Thank you.
Here he comes.
$3,000?
$8,000.
$8,000? And is this... Is this private property?
Yeah, it's real one.
Public property? It's owned by the city? All right. We moved pretty quickly today.
You talking about it now?
Yes, uh, investigation of possible grave sites.
There's a quicksand office.
That may be what she just...
No, that's just, that's just a letter. That's just a letter. This is for the investigation that Detective Manager...
The only question I have is, it's in the boundary of municipality.
It is indeed, however, if you read on their West Virginia State Code, um, because they had called the state police on this. West Virginia State Code dictates that if people read upon the discovery of human scoundrel about the third paragraph down, it's up to the county sheriff. That's just the way the code's written. So that's when we took over the investigation.
Yeah, the sheriff shall promptly...
Mm-hmm.
And that's why the West Virginia State Police referred it to the sheriff after they started.
Now, this says the sheriff's supposed to notify Director of Historic Preservation Section, right?
And we did.
But does it say in statute that the sheriff should further investigate or investigation comes out of the municipality's hands and into the sheriff?
It's, that's, the code says we're the ones that have to, uh, do the investigation. If you read on the bottom, uh, we were, we're the ones to notify if there's a grave marker, possibility of being moved or unmarked grave. Shall promptly, prior, we did notify the Historic Preservation Section. Detective Manager talked to them, and he'll take your first hand.
Does it say, are you referring to shall immediately cease any activity which may cause further disturbance and notify the county sheriff within 48 hours?
Correct.
That's it? And then down below, it talks further about you giving notice?
Yes.
Okay.
We notified both the State Medical Examiner's Office and the West Virginia State Office of Archaeology. And I continue to explain here in this letter that the archaeological side is not one of because it is not historically significant enough for them to be involved.
Says the people, so we'll research for it.
The Medical Examiner's Office told me that since the person died of natural causes so long ago, they are not going to get involved either. So that leaves us with the, with this.
The next to last paragraph is what I don't understand. If you've obtained copies of every recorded deed and it's last sale, nowhere in the deed does it indicate there are graves present? I mean, maybe my ignorance, why we...
Because there's a headstone on the property.
Oh.
The next sentence says, including the one remaining marker that is still... There is at least two, those two graves that were recorded in 1937 by the Works Project Administration. I addressed that in the second paragraph of the second page. That's the only time in recorded history that I can find that that cemetery has been documented.
Right.
It says there are two marked graves. Right now, there are only one still standing. Um, and, uh, I consulted with a private entity in the Midwest who said based on our geographic location and the time frame that is on that headstone, that there are going to be probably several more unmarked graves in the area. So we know there are two documented, there is only one still standing, and however many unmarked graves if there were.
So if you find that there, I mean, so we do an investigation, then what's the proceed, what's, what happens?
Basically, at this point, I am stuck at a standstill. I can't interview the surveyors, the contractors, the persons. I mean, there have been allegations that people have been seen carrying headstones out there.
Oh.
I, I don't know if that's true or not.
Right.
And without knowing for sure what is in the ground there, um, I, I can't really proceed as far as interviewing people because I wouldn't even know if what I am talking about is true. The neighbors are saying, several neighbors in the area are saying, there were more than two headstones there. There were maybe six, eight. Um, the loch was heavily wooded before it was clear cut. It is possible that there were more headstones there and they were carried off. But I don't know because I don't even know if there are bodies there. That's why we need a accurate survey of the property to say, yes, there are two bodies there or there are 25 bodies there. Because as of right now, we know there's one dead stone standing.
Hypothetically, say there's several bodies there. Then what's the, and you found out that, then what is, what happens?
That would give way to, um, statements that I've already taken from neighbors. And I would be able to approach the people who I suspect removed those stones and say, um, I know that there are graves there and we need to talk about it.
So I know what you're, you're leading to. If there's criminal charges brought to the people, that's a possibility. If that's a possibility, then restitution could be, we could...
This could be included in restitution.
Now, is that the property that a developer is trading with Westover?
It's it.
Correct.
Who owns the property right now?
Right now, the city of Westover.
City of Westover. Where exactly is it?
Uh, the intersection of, uh...
Virginia and Richmond.
It is down, um, real sharp curve. Before you get to Granville, you speak super big, it's bar was there on the corner. And there was a, maybe an auto lot there.
Yeah.
And then the street cuts back real sharp.
Like where the real food land was? Before you get to Foodland?
Correct, correct. It would be on the riverside of Foodland.
Right.
Okay.
If, if we were to go through it this, can we bill Westover? If, I mean, if we pay for this because it's Westover's...
Well, I, I think the more appropriate question, if you don't mind...
Yeah, no, go ahead.
I think the more appropriate question is, can we bill the landowner? Because by the code section, and I haven't researched this, but I assume you all did, and it's clearly a county jurisdiction thing, county sheriff's jurisdiction thing within the, within the municipality. So I, on that basis, I don't think we can bill Westover. But, but on the basis of, can we bill the landowner to...
The city of Westover is now currently the landowner.
I know, but I, I want to, I want to ask a legal question rather than an actual question. Can, does the statute provide a provision that if the county sheriff has to go to great lengths and expense to secure the heritage of cemeteries? Uh, 1831 cemetery is clearly a historical heritage in that section. Can we then bill the landowner for disturbing those graves and causing all the expense by the disturbance of the cemetery?
I have not researched that. There may be, not in what I have read, read it in chapter, uh, chapter 29, I believe it is. However, you know, if it were to become a criminal case, which is initially why we became involved, it would be a substantial restitution to the caper.
Yeah, right.
The, the one thing, have we even talked to Westover officials about this?
Three fast foot lanes.
What I would, what I would suggest, I mean, I don't, I don't have any problems, bottom line, no one else is going to pay for this, that we paid for it. And I think it's tolerable that because the people didn't have any historic significance, the state's not going to worry about it being buried there. That's, that's just unbelievable. But I, I think we ought to refer to Phil Magro to give with the city of Westover's legal counsel so that we get all the legal questions out of the way. But if it gets down to it that we've got to pay for it, I don't have any problems paying for it. But I think we need to touch our bases before we implement it. Would you agree with that?
Yeah, I, I agree, I agree with that. The... I, I have great concern that the Medical Examiner took that position. I mean, the, these, uh, there, when I was growing up out on Owl Creek Road, at that time, they didn't have a name of it. We used to go up and play in the woods, way up in the woods, up, up behind the creek here. And there was an old cemetery there, in the middle of the woods. You squirrel hunt around it. And areas just grave markers all over the place. And they, but they wore down, but I remember my dad got down with a piece of paper and rubbed, rubbed on it. And there were, there were grave markers up there dated from the 1700s. Late 1700s, like 1799, 1793. And that, I always thought at that time, when I was a little kid, nine, 10 years old, huge historical significance. Now, first off, if they, if they don't check the body, how do they know whether the body was, died of natural causes? You know, the old rumor is, the best place to hide a body is where, where dead bodies are supposed to be, in a cemetery. That's where you hide dead bodies, you know? So, um, I, I just can't believe that they've taken that position. I'm sure we've got a number of missing people.
They took that position and then the archaeology, the state archaeology division, excuse me, they come in contact. And they said, they were the ones who said it was not historically significant. They said it had been some culture of persons that the state of West Virginia is not familiar with, or a, an Indian burial ground that, that we could learn something from how they lived, then they would be interested. But they said just a cemetery from the 1800s are apparently very common in this state. And then...
Well, they must not know anything about Montague County because we're still trying to figure out how the people in Westover have lived.
The people in Westover are still trying to figure out how we live in Westover. No, it's just amazing, I mean, how, how they can form a conclusion that the people who may be buried there don't have any historical significance. I mean, who knows, they may have fought in the Civil War.
Thought that as well. I can't get them to come here and help, so.
But, and I don't mean to be giving you a rough time, but, but those are just some questions.
I was shocked that the Medical Examiner's Office didn't want to involve...
It's obvious that you've done an excellent job on this.
We will get a hold of Phil Magro then because we need to...
Yeah, let him deal with Westover's legal...
Right, because we, and the biggest thing for the, uh, the analyst company is they'd like to do, if you're possible, for the turn of life.
Sure.
Sure. I, I would just add that, uh, to what Bill said, that I, I think you can gather, you need to continue to give them a hard time down there. And you got the commission's support on that. Beat on them, even if, if you have to get in the newspaper and complain about it. Because that's just not right. So, a, a settlement in 1831, obviously it was a settlement, that's why they have graves there, has to have historical significance. Tom, did you have anything else?
No, I, I mean, I agree. I'll move forward with the pose, that we propose, uh, $8,695 for this identification of possible graves.
Providing all the legal...
Yes, providing that we go through, yeah, leaving it open with the legal matters.
I'll second it.
Have a motion in the second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed.
Thank you.
Thank you, good work. A letter from assessor, it's not, I, I don't have one, I don't have one.
I'll let you know once we're through.
Oh, okay. Thank you. A letter from assessor Mark Music, correction of clerical error from Board of Assessment. Yes, Mr. Music?
For our last hearing in October, we had one parcel that was, was missing a subdivision on it. It was 228, should have been 228.1. So the tax credit filled out, it was 2.1. Everything else is in order. PF 11, the move from the other thumb was correct. The actual recording and, uh, of the information linked to the record is correct. None of the were asking that we have to make that correction on the 2.1.
So it's the order itself that needs to be corrected? And it's just a, it's just a designation correction?
Yeah.
Should we issue another order or can we just write it on that order? Issue, we should issue another order on that? Okay, I, I just wonder what was more convenient, what was the best way to do it?
What we can do is just, I can official approve the letter that he submitted with the changes on it to the clerk. So it's making that a record.
Would it be the easiest? I would, I would move that we do that.
Second.
A motion in the second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed.
$1.20.
Okay, thank you. A letter from regional jail authority regarding daily billing rate.
As of on February 18th, we receive a letter that the billing rate will be unchanged at $38.25 in the next coming year. And they're also advising that the implementation of Scent Bill 371, which they're trying to devise other means of rehabilitation programs that is drug work to try to increase the population of jails. Something we talked about in the city county meeting last week. Also working in that regard on getting the amount of money that we're getting from state police tickets. And I have a breakdown from the regional jail of the number of arrestees that were sent to the jail following municipality or arresting agency, which I'll get to that.
Did they also furnish you the charges? We was wanting to know, why were people in Montague County being put in jail?
That was not included on the report.
We need that. We need that for the committee.
Yeah. Uh, we don't have to take any action on that, that's just notification. Any further correspondence?
I do have a letter from the sheriff asking to approve the transfer of Larry Duckin, part-time court security officer, full-time court security officer, as of November 1st. He will be eligible for benefits, rate of pay $2,135 per month. Also, Robert Riggle, same situation, moving from part-time court security to full-time. And Jacob Nay, also part-time to full-time.
These are the positions we approved, lot.
Move for approval. Second.
A motion in the second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Any further correspondence?
I do want to announce, and you may do by order, set the date for the bid opening on the federal building renovations as December 12th at 10:30 a.m.
Are these the ones that we needed to amend because we changed the time?
No, this is new.
This is something new? Or we're going to amend those others? Or are we going to keep them?
That's coming from the fiduciary commissioner. She was making arrangements to move that hearing from later in the day.
Oh, okay, that's where that will come from? Okay. Very good.
Now, the architect was done with all the architectural drawings?
Yes.
And these ready to be...
There will be a pre-bid, um, mandatory pre-bid on Thursday, November 14th at 10 a.m. Bid opening December 11th at 10:30.
So November 14th and December 11th will be the bid opening?
Say, December 11th and 14th?
11th.
And that'll be at our regular meeting in the courthouse. Okay.
We need a motion for approval?
Yeah, I would move that we approve those dates for pre-bid as well as bid opening.
Second.
Have a motion in the second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Any further, anything further correspondence-wise? About what time is it, Bill? I don't have my watch.
1:26.
1:26.
1:26.
We could probably get to one more thing. How about the bid award?
Yeah, let's, let's drop down to unfinished business. Recommendation for bid award paving at upper deck at federal building.
Oh, okay.
Okay, sure.
I'm going to try to fill in.
I'll make a recommendation, we accept the product paving for the paving and Mansudo roofing for the roofing project.
Okay, you have both of them there? Okay. We probably should have a motion on each one.
Yeah, the paving is at, at the new Justice Center, correct? And then the, the three roofs are the courthouse?
Courthouse annex.
Annex.
Magistrate Court, both roofs.
I'll make a motion that we approve and accept a recommendation for the paving of the upper deck at the federal building or otherwise the new Justice Center.
I second.
A motion in the second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed.
I would also move that we approve the three bids recommended for the new roofs.
Second.
And who was that again?
Mansudo.
Mansudo. Have a motion in the second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. All right, then.
Still have two minutes.
Two minutes. Ben, maybe you can sit, give us some, a joke or two. Do you have a joke in your pocket? You sure you didn't want to be a stand-up comic when you were younger?
Have you heard anything about Oliver Luck? Anything new?
You might want to have Richmond give us a little, uh, pre, uh, description leading up to this point.
Yeah, I'll have him do that. Matter of fact, I, I can start by going over the public hearing guidelines and then it will be, then it will be 1:30. We, we've adopted guidelines in the past, and whenever we have a public hearing, I always try to read them. The chairperson will open the public hearing, citing the case. Chairperson will first call for the presentation, staff report, report on any communications received. Chairperson then call upon the applicant to present his or her petition and all evidence supporting his or her request. The chairperson, I guess that should be president, but, uh, will then call on those who are in support of the request or other matter being presented. Uh, the chairperson will then call on those who are opposed to the request or other matter being presented. The chairperson may then grant the petition or write a rebuttal to any arguments presented by the opposition. Each side will proceed without interruption by the other, and all arguments and pleadings will be addressed to the board commission. No questioning or argument between individuals will be permitted. Basically, you talk to us. Any relevant evidence will may be considered if it is the sort of evidence on which responsible persons are accustomed to rely in the conduct of serious affairs. The chairperson may exclude irrelevant or redundant testimony and make, and may make such other rulings as may be necessary for the orderly conduct of the proceedings, ensuring basic fairness and full hearing of the issues involved. In order to expedite, expedite the conduct of hearing, the chairperson may limit the amount of time that a person may use in addressing the board commission. Basically, I, I'm, I'm kind of liberal on this. I'm looking at probably three minutes per person. Uh, if you need more time, you just need to ask and I'll give you more time. The chairperson may also limit the speakers or testimony upon a particular issue in order to avoid repetitious and cumulative evidence. Other words, if you've got four or five people all in agreement, you can just say, you know, this is our position and these four or five people, we're all in this position. Unless they have overwhelming desire for each one to get up and state it. Again, I'm rather liberal with that. I want everyone to feel they've had an opportunity to present their, their entire case. After all evidence has been submitted to the board commission, the board commission, the commission shall close public participation for discussion prior to taking any action, but may ask questions of the staff, the applicant, or persons in the audience pertaining to the matter under consideration. Basically, after we took all the... Basically, after we took all the evidence, it's between us unless one of us wants to ask something further from anyone. That's the basic public hearing guidelines. There, I assume it's one-thirty now?
It's one-thirty-one.
One-thirty-one, right on time. Okay, we're now setting, or calling forth the public hearing for application regarding map amendment, MA zero-zero-five dash two-zero-one-three, Van Boris Road and Bakers Ridge Road. Rich, I'm sure you have your presentation and the, maybe you could give us, start it out by giving us a little history, procedural history as to how we got here and then you can go into the specifics.
What you're, what the request for today is a map amendment from R three, which is medium density, to R four, which is high density. The applicant has, is currently R three is adjacent to R four. If you look at the actual staff report, you can see the layout of the different land clips. It's pictured in curve, the last meeting we have brought a spreadsheet of the zoning map. So you can locate the property.
Great, that's very helpful.
What you have here is a parcel which is currently partially vacant and partially a trailer park. It is thirteen point seven four acres. The area is a area of mixed use, primarily high-density residential on one side. It's medium density and surrounded by single-family residential. The property has adequate services, there's water, sewer, that sort of thing there. And as I indicated, it is adjacent to R four. So it's at least possible to go ahead and include it as a high-density area.
Could she bring the map up and you can show us where it is and where the R four is and where the others are?
The planning staff concerned in making their recommendations to the planning commission and to the county commission was that although the developer is proposing to develop five point two acres, there's no reason to believe that the developer intends to build more.
You've got R four down here.
Truthful about that.
R two here.
Thirteen acres.
More R three. That's commercial.
This is the only point of contact with R four.
Right here, this area.
Yeah, the rest of it is not.
You've been at five hundred forty-nine years.
This way is more density residential.
That's pretty significant density in that location off of Bakers Ridge Road. The other concern that we had is that R three essentially acts somewhat as a buffer between the high-density residential area and the single-family areas. So that if that area was rezoned to R four, then you basically have high-density meetings up against the single-family residential.
Oh, the access area is sold.
For that reason, it was the staff recommendation that we take no position and leave the decision to the planning commission and to the county commission. The planning commission, after hearing the testimony and reviewing the information, passed a resolution recommending to this body that the map amendment be denied. We have not, I have forwarded all the correspondence that we received prior to the planning commission. There was a petition, there was a letter, and that was ordered on you. We have not received any further communications to our office for the public hearing.
Can I ask one question? What would it be if you kept it at R three development compared to what would be proposed? Just an idea, so we can see.
Sure, sure. If you, if you go to the staff report, you can see that the density.
Sure.
The densities for R three. The density for R three is four structures per acre containing no more than sixteen dwelling units per acre for maximum of thirty-two bedrooms. Okay, so you multiply that by thirteen.
The majority of it is, but you got this little area here and here, which would be continued to be R three. It's the area inside the red line.
Okay.
Yeah.
I assume these are the property owners.
Yeah, this is the property owner.
Did they, did these property owners appear or take any position?
They did not say anything of the sort.
Okay.
We're not really a fan of doing stuff like that, 'cause then you just get a little tiny area here that's by itself. And, I mean, that's not so bad because you got just on either side of the street, you've got all that, but it'd be by itself.
And this is over there too?
Density allowed.
Well, of course, that was.
And that's just small area?
And this is, these are all mobile homes?
Yes, that's the Saint Clair mobile home, Mark.
Oh, okay.
You've got the upper, upper area and the lower area and.
So, so basically, they wanna move.
Wants to reason so he can build.
Part of that Saint Clair trailer park and the other land to a.
But he's gonna keep the trailer park?
He's gonna keep the upper and lower areas at this time.
But he wants to really pack his.
Right.
But he wants to build in there.
President developer is wanting to do.
He's just gonna build R four. Okay, thank you. I appreciate that, that's very helpful.
Oh. However, for clarification.
That's very good.
They could add a later date.
Very helpful.
Whether they did or whether they subsequently sold the property.
Sell it and then it could be used as. Okay. I see what you're saying.
We had no reason to believe that Mr. Colton was not going to do what he said he was going to do, but there doesn't conclude at some future date that it could be developed to the maximum amount.
Okay.
And that was all.
And that was your major concern?
In consideration of the planning commission and their recommendations of that. Any further questions for staff?
No, thank you for that map, that was very helpful.
Yeah, appreciate it.
Do you have any questions?
Not at this time, I think after we do hear all the evidence, I'd like to discuss it.
Okay, that'll be good. Um, Mr. Crable, was it? The applicant? He's the next one that gets to go. Who's, uh, is there anyone here representing, what's it, Durant?
Garrett.
Durant?
Yeah, I am.
Yes, sir. Okay, you can come on forward. You're not Mr. Crable?
No.
Crable was the engineer.
Okay, well, that was the agent, that's what I was going by. What was your name, sir, I'm sorry?
Oh, you're thinking of my engineer, Scott Crable.
Right.
Dean Colton.
Oh. I talked to you, I'm sorry. Okay, yes, sir. Now you get a opportunity to talk and speak.
Well, really, I'm not planning on doing anything. I started this back in two thousand and ten and started the plans and went through MUB and I have plats done and the whole works. I did start this and I was starting to go just get grandfathered in like a few of my other peers have done before the zoning commission took over. And basically, they turned me down, the county commission turned me down for grandfathering. And so, you know, the next step is you're gonna go to court with that, which my other peers have done and won. But I didn't wanna do that, I just said, well, let's just rezone it. And to R four and then I can do some other things that I wanna do without, you know, somebody building this concrete plant with no zoning. And I do believe in zoning, I'm from California, born and raised. And if we didn't have zoning there, the place would be a nightmare, be a Tijuana, Mexico. You know, I do believe in it. And that's all, but I'm, the only thing I wanted to, I was thinking, maybe we can R four, the five acres, it's not five, it's six point something acres, but, um, on, where's that, you have this map? Where's the little, do you give the little map?
Yeah, we did.
Um, you can bring, you can bring the large map up here.
We don't need that.
You're talking about this map?
No.
No, he's looking for another.
Do you have a staff report, there's a colored map?
It's a colored map that it has.
Yeah, I just saw it.
There it is.
The third page when you.
This isn't even it either.
No, there's another. No, I just looked at it, 'cause.
It's real simple.
Yes.
There it is.
Page one of thirteen. It says one of thirteen.
Oh, it's right on the first?
Well, no, you go about ten pages in and it's one.
You have the application followed by the staff report.
Right.
Okay, right here is the six acres. Okay? And it's raw land. I'm not touching the trailer park.
Where's the six acres?
Right here, this whole area, six acres. And you come off of Bakers Ridge to it. And there's also, I can do right away from down on Van Boris as well. But I have, you know, plans from MUB and everybody for the water. I mean, I've done a lot of work on this and alls I wanna do is put some apartments in there and/or a single-family dwelling. I talked to the county commission, Patricia, about doing some, maybe building some homes in there as well, but I haven't decided what I'm doing. But I have plats done already from two thousand and ten of apartment buildings.
What size are these apartment buildings?
There, each unit, I think, is a sixteen unit in each building. I think there's five buildings.
And if it stays at medium, what medium gets the?
How many am I allowed to put in if it stays? I think it's eighty-five.
Is there so many per acre or how do you figure that?
Yeah, it's per, yeah. But there's one more acre than they calculated. And what I was thinking is, maybe I could just rezone this right here and then leave the park. I'm not touching the park, I don't, I'm not kicking those people out of the park, I don't care what anybody, I mean, that's.
That's been there a long time.
Oh, yeah. I got people in there that have been there for twenty-something years. But the land's just sitting and all the sewer and utilities are there. So I'm, you know, I decided to do this and had some personal problems and put it on hold. And now I'm getting it going.
Do we, do we have a difference? What's, what's the difference between medium and high? He's got units of putting sixteen per building, I guess. What would that have to change to to stay where it's at? To stay at R three? Or at whatever it is, medium density?
Medium density. Do you have the number figured out already? No, okay. That was what?
So if it's, what they're asking, if it's R three, how many apartments can I put in on five acres?
Okay, well, you multiply five, five times.
I said four.
Okay, you're gonna have sixteen dwelling units per acre, so five times sixteen.
Eighty.
Well, that's what, that's what he wants to put in. Isn't that what you wanna put in?
Yeah, no, that's not right, 'cause.
That's what he wants to put in.
Yeah, that's, I'd be happy with eighty. We can leave.
Yeah, we could call this off.
I know. Much better.
Four structures, sixty-four, thirty-two bedrooms per acre. And then, high density, we're talking eight structures containing no more than twelve dwelling units per acre. That's the difference between medium and high.
Sixteen and twenty? Just four units?
No.
Four units per building, probably.
Yeah, you have, okay. Let's start over. The natural density is four structures per acre. No more than sixteen dwelling units.
Okay.
Per acre, times thirty-two bedrooms, that's your maximum under medium density.
Okay.
Per acre.
Per acre. So you multiply that times five.
Well, let's just stay with an acre and then we can figure it out.
Yeah.
For your high density, you have eight structures containing no more than forty dwelling units with a maximum of eighty bedrooms per acre.
Oh, so that's a big difference.
Yeah, yeah, it's more than double.
Right, but how many, how many buildings were you planning on putting in there?
I was gonna put in five buildings.
Five buildings of sixteen each? Well, that, well, that would fit.
But that's not what I was.
No, he said, he said it would tell me four buildings per, not five. That's what you said was permitted.
Per the five acres.
Per acre, but he's got six acres.
Yeah, but this is not what you and I discussed before. I was told, Patricia told me I was only allowed to put in sixty units. Yeah, maybe she did.
In R three, if you want to do five point two acres in the middle, it would be eighty-three point two units with one hundred sixty-six point four beds or two beds per unit. If you were to go to R four, it would be two hundred eight units with four hundred sixteen beds with two beds per unit.
Yeah, yeah, I, I understand that. But I, I'm trying to compare with what, what he says he wants to put in. He wants to put in five buildings?
I'm okay with this.
Five buildings with six, five buildings with sixteen units per building?
Yeah, that's the question. Can he put in five buildings per sixteen beds per unit in this plot of land? That's the question.
Five and a half, six acres.
And I could see people shaking their head, this and that, but I don't know. Does the rules allow that? Because that would be R three, then he wouldn't have.
Yeah, based on the numbers you just gave us, he can already do what he wants to do.
Let me, I sat in on the planning commission, of course, I abstained from voting. But the impression I left with the planning commission in the presentation that took place was to move from R three to R four meant more than double the units. Now, I don't have an exact number, I don't recall that. But I remember that the description was, if it stays R three, you got about half the number that you'll have if it goes to R four.
I was told that I could only put sixty units in there.
But I'm sure we're gonna get some more information from, from some people here.
Yeah, but we should know the facts before, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, if, if he could already do what he wants to do under R three, why are we here?
That wasn't the presentation, it's the planning commission.
Right, so that's what we need to see?
That isn't, that wasn't the message that was communicated to you.
Yeah, we should make sure.
But, but if, but if that's what you're going to do.
I could start tomorrow.
And it means medium, you can start tomorrow, we can stop this whole thing.
He wants to do five buildings at sixteen units. He's only allowed four buildings with no more than sixteen.
Yeah, but it's also you guys are short an acre.
Right.
So I'm back to five.
Right, he's back to five acres.
He says it's almost six acres.
Right.
It's actually six, it's over six acres.
Which means he would be allowed to do it.
If he's got five acres, what Rich just said, that's, and you could put one building per acre of sixteen, that's five buildings, so I don't see where you're saying he can only put four buildings in.
My engineer met with them and he's the one that they figured out what I can do and what, that's why I made.
Now, we agree with you that if he were to go to R four, it would double the amount. But that's not the question before it. The question is if he's permitted to do exactly what he's asking and right now, the information you've given us is yes.
Without any change.
Would it be one bedroom or two bedroom?
It'd be two.
Two bedroom?
Some ones as well.
That's why I'm confused because.
Yeah. Yeah, we're confused too.
Good.
That wasn't the proposal we were giving together.
And that may be, I mean, that's where there seems to be some.
I hired an engineer to do this.
That's the problem, no. Nothing against engineers, but.
If you can build within the parameters of R three, then we don't, we don't have to.
We're done.
Exactly.
We don't have to do anything.
All they have to do is go through the process for our development of significant impact.
You need a plat and so on.
Yeah.
Well, and for that, any units.
We still need, we still need to get people who may be a part of it. An opportunity to present some information.
I, I, I can do that, I'm just trying to figure out whether he can do what he says he wants to do now or not. We're not ending the hearing, I'm just trying to figure out what's going on.
Yes. Sorry, I did just.
Yes, he can, he can build five buildings.
What you're suggesting, the five buildings at sixteen units.
Okay.
Two beds per unit, you can do that in the five point two acres.
Without changing.
The question is, why was it the planning commission, that information not communicated? I mean, that wasn't what was communicated to the people who voted against it.
We never talked about, um, in that first meeting, how many units you could put in there. That's never, that never...
Well, that's not my recollection. My recollection was that if it moved, it was gonna double. And that was your request. Your request wasn't, can I build what I want within...
Right, but I've been told...
You wanted to increase it to R four, and that's...
No, I'm, I'm, I'm okay with this now, because that's not what I was told. My engineer, I'm the engineer, I'm sitting with them and discuss this. And he came to me, and I have all the paperwork, and it says I can only put sixty-two units in there.
Well, and, and maybe there's, maybe there is bulk requirements or something like that that limits it, I don't know. But the density requirements, how many units you can put in from, for acres, that has not changed.
Okay, so right now, I could put in...
Same from the beginning to the end.
I could put in eight, or thirty-two, um...
Bed.
I could put in thirty-two beds.
Per acre.
Per acre. And five buildings.
Per acre.
Per acre with five buildings.
I'm okay with that.
Okay, maybe we need to see with other people.
Well, uh...
This is not what I was told.
Okay, well, thank you. Uh, we're, we're gonna go ahead and continue the, continue the hearing. Okay. Uh, um, is there, is there anyone? I'm trying to figure out how we go here. Is there anyone in them four, uh, wanna speak, uh, in, in favor of this petition? Is there anyone that wants to speak opposed to this petition? Yes, sir, I'm just, start over here.
My name's Dan Beck, and I live at thirteen oh five Baker Ridge Road. I live right behind the law, up on the hill. I can look over and see the trailer park that we're all talking about. Right now, the road's over there, we've talked about it before. They cannot handle the traffic that there is now up there. The road is deteriorating from the traffic going up the hill. The apartments at the bottom of the hill, the cause of the runoff, is flooding these apartments. It's a, it's a hazard for people to walk up the road, there's no sidewalks up there. Someone's gonna get hurt. And the noise level, you all can't believe the cussing that goes on down there that you can hear up on the hill. And these are other apartments, and, and I, I've, you know, and I'm all for business. I have two businesses here in Vaughn County. But you know, there's enough is enough up there. The traffic, we can't handle, we got a new high school out there, that's putting new traffic up on top of that hill. And I just don't see it happening. In the bad weather, I know they try to get up the Van Forest Road right as they can, but with all the college students and the people that live up there that are from out of town, they don't know what winter tires are, you can't get home in the evenings, and it's a mess. And until something's done up there, I don't see how, you know, you can even think about letting more apartment buildings in. And I know everybody says, we're only gonna build this. But if you change, that gives them a reason to change, and they will. And that's how, that's my opinion.
Thank you, sir. We'll just go down the line, and, and, yes, I think, who, who, okay?
Yes, sir, Russ Purdman, I'm with the town, I'm David Dodd. And I got some sentiments, yes, we do have issues out there, in the interest of Mr. Colton. I'm not opposed, more supporting the change. I need more information. We don't have accurate information right now to make a decision on. And how many inches are you gonna put in? What is the plan, do you have plot plans, do you have store range? Are you gonna meet the western ordinances? I mean, I voted for the ordinances. And, and the idea that this would be controlled. And we're trying to help the commission control these issues out there, because we know the county, it's not so much Mr. Colton's issues with roads, it's the state, the county and the state. And the other issues at hand right now, with the ordinances provisions we have right now, they are supposed to control traffic by development, by allowing certain amount of developments to take place, or not take place, based on the traffic patterns, traffic flows and the safety of the area. While we're already overrun, we're completely overrun with bad traffic. And just a good example, the North Elementary School bus system used to ship out about two buses into that area here, a year ago, once I visited North Elementary. There are now three, and they're looking at four, traveling up and down that road. We need to consider people's safety on that roadway if we add more traffic. You know, it would be nice to see a plan, or at least a conceptual drawing, what Mr. Colton proposes. It sounds like he's done some engineering, that's something in mind.
I do.
And the other question is, will be a timeline to review those plans? And if it was rezoned at R four, because that's the concern that I have. Not that he would build on R three because it's more than eight floors doing that. If it were rezoned at R four, would it be sold? And then all of that thirteen acre would be developed at R four? That's a huge concern, if we start talking about population density and traffic. So, yeah, what do, what do we have? What accurate information do we have to make a decision on right now? I haven't seen any yet, so that's my statement.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
I'm Tom McCormick, I live at sixteen oh two Van Boris Road. That's right at the intersection of the Van Boris and Baker Ridge Road. Give you a little history. Uh, if you go a little further out on Van Boris Road, there's a road that takes off down into that Brentwood area, it's called McCormick Cola. My great-grandfather lived down there. My grandfather lived there. I lived down there. My family lived in the house I'm in now for, since nineteen fifty-five. Boys, you got the same road as you did in nineteen fifty-five and nineteen twenty. You got the same road. And it's a mess. And traffic is a mess. And when you're coming up out of Van Boris, if you're gonna go out, out the Baker Ridge Road and, and not continue on down the hill, the people are, are coming at it unnecessarily, high rate speed. And they'll try to beat the car coming up the hill that's gonna stay on Van Boris Road. That's a very dangerous intersection. I saw a SWAT team type emergency vehicle the other day, trying to make the turn off the Van Boris Road on the Baker Ridge. He couldn't make the turn. He had to get out, get traffic behind him, to back up. So when he couldn't move around to get out on the Van Boris Road. So you got an emergency, uh, vehicle problem out there. Uh, you got, you got too many cars, too many apartments, and, and apartments still being built. I mean, uh, who was it? Avon? They're still built down there. And I, I mean, they're putting them in, you know, unbelievably fast and packing them in. So how many more is gonna be built there before this guy even starts? And somebody ought to take a look at that too, because I don't know what that density is. But I, I'd say it's probably over the maximum.
I assume he applied.
His grandfather in.
No, yeah.
Oh.
The project down there is grandfathered in.
But who is mo, who is monitoring that?
That would be me.
That would be you.
That is me, I do go, I do inspect the site, I am making sure the parents ask for housing there.
Thank you.
But like I said, well, how many, what, how would you rate that area in R four density?
Well, it's zoned, it's zoned as R three, but it's being built up at R four density, because that whole project was underway prior to the ordinance going into effect.
Yeah, so that's at R four density now. How many more units are gonna be built down there? Yeah.
Well, uh, well, sir, try to, try to focus, and I can try to answer it for you. It, it, it's R three. He's grandfathered in, which the plat, or the plans that he had that are grandfathered, he can do. But on anything that he has a plan, he's gotta abide by R three, correct?
Yes, that's correct, right, yeah.
Okay, okay.
But you're still, you build at R, at least R four density or higher at this point.
Well, I, I understand, and, and that's, these are the problems that you run into when you, you know, lock the bond, barn door after the horse was stolen. I mean, you know, that, that's what's happened here, and we're going through some growing pains and concerns and...
Well, we've got the city bus out there now too.
Yeah.
Which has stops here and there. You've got school buses going through there, and you can't hardly get out that road at, at twenty-three and four-thirty, for the school bus stops.
Well, it was, it was, it was that way before they even put University High School in, so I, I'm sure it's a nightmare.
Well, there's more traffic out there than there was when they put University High School in.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. I understand that.
And, and it's, uh, it's a safety problem. People, if people get hurt or an accident, and there's traffic out there like at four o'clock, I don't know how emergency vehicles are gonna get through.
Thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Marcy Carroll, and I'm here representing the Homeowners Association for Baker Ridge Manor. I'm the president, and I'm the one that supplied the petition at the previous meeting. Um, that represents the majority of our homeowners that were recommending that the zoning be denied. Um, they, I'm here representing the concerns from the, the subdivision. I would like to make a statement that I really appreciate this process.
Sure.
That, um, the planning commission is trying to do, and I, I support their efforts, and I think that this is a well-run process. Um, the, we, I echo the road concerns, that's obvious. Um, there is concern about emergency vehicles. We do have an elderly population, the people out there that, if we have ambulance, we can't get them out there. I won't dwell on the roads, it's been spoken of. We do have concerns about the school capacities. North and Suncrest are at maximum capacity already. Um, and having more high-density population out there, um, the high-density that's coming in seems to have a large young piece to it, so we have concerns about the populations of their schools, um, and know that there's not much capacity to build those schools out much more. Um, we do have concerns about public safety. Um, we have quite a bit of theft that happen in our neighborhood, and we can't really get the attention of the sheriff's department as much as we need as it is because of such, um, you know, the demand. Um, so adding more density to that, we have a fear that there will be more demand, and therefore might not be able to be met. The fire, we are supported by volunteer fire departments. We do not have, um, you know, city fire, so we do have concern about the capacity of the fire department and then medical response. Utilities, I appreciate that he has plans for, from Mub, but we have already, with the high-density that's been moved in, we have already seen the impact of our utilities, our water pressure, internet access, um, that type of things. We are having impact, um, to our quality of life with our utilities, because there is not sufficient infrastructure out there to support all this high-density runoff. We have had ma, massive flooding happening on West Run Road because of all this high-density population that's being built. There, we, it's just not properly drained. Um, and when you add that much concrete to the ground, and all you have is runoff for parking lots and, um, building roofs and such, it collects a lot of water. Um, we also checked around in the area, because there's so much high-density, um, area, um, out there, we checked to see if there was need, if there's demand. Every, um, area out there has plenty of vacancies. There is no need, there is no demand for more high-density homes out there at this time. Um, the last point that a homeowner would like me to make is that, um, right now, uh, currently on Baker's Ridge Manor, there, I mean, Baker's Ridge Road, there are no R four, R four zones along Baker's Ridge Road. If we allow this, um, R four to actually meet onto R four, then you're gonna set a precedence that now Baker's Ridge Road could be built out. It's gonna be hard to come back, um, at a later date and not allow another R four unit on Baker's Ridge Road, and we don't feel that Baker's Ridge has that, um, capabilities right now.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, anyone else, we just go down the line? Yes, sir.
Baker's Brooks, and, uh, it's just an observation that, uh, Vaughn County seems to have a habit, at least in the past, of allowing development to take place prior to worrying about the infrastructure. She seems to have an issue that is dealt with afterwards, when the problems...
Absolutely.
So...
The way it's been done.
You know, if you don't deal with the infrastructure issues on the front end, uh, it's, it, you're just, you're just behind the problem. Somebody mentioned about California. Well, California does something as well as Florida, which is very novel. Uh, they're called impact fees, which are charged to developers, because when you build something in one spot, there's a ripple effect. It doesn't affect that area that day. It affects that area five, ten, fifteen years down the road. Five, ten years down the road, you gotta start thinking about building schools, new sewage plants, to take care of all these additional things that go along with new development. And if you don't plan for that ahead, when you, when you develop it, you're not planning twenty years in the future. You're not planning.
Uh, that, that's a good point, and you're right, uh, west, west-run voters, uh, in passing this ordinance, said they wanted to put a stop to that. But there's many parts of this county where, uh, the infrastructure, and that's why we're talking about subdivision regulations, that, uh, infrastructure is not taken into consideration at all, and, and, and that's something that we hope to rectify. And I want to add to one other thing that you had to say. Not only does it affect five or ten years from now, but anything out there on Baker's Ridge Road is gonna have a huge traffic impact at both one nineteen and Baker's Ridge Road, and at, uh, seven oh five and Van Boris Road. And that is already jammed up. I mean, you just can't, you can't shove people into places and only have a couple ways to get out without it having a, a huge effect. We thank you for your comments, though. Anyone else? Anyone, yes, sir?
Hello, my name is Alex Dow, I live in Baker Ridge Manor. I've lived there for about ten years now, I was student at the university. And I just wanna say that this kind of development out here, in all around the county, I think is actually very exciting to see. Um, but I think it's only exciting to see if it's done responsibly. And this kind of development can happen if we had wider roads, if we had sidewalks, if we had, you know, that kind of thing. And so until that happens, I don't think we should be allowing anybody to build this kind of stuff out there at all, until the county takes the responsibility to fix the problems that we have right now.
I, I appreciate that, sir. Uh, I, I just wanna put a, a, a little asterisk correction for you. Until the state legislature gives the county the authority to deal with it, we can't deal with it. And that's one of the things we've been fighting with the state legislature. We've all been involved with the legislature, uh, in trying to, to deal with these, these sort of problems. Montague County is, is the, one of three counties that's over, got over a hundred thousand population. The majority, about thirty-five percent of the counties in this state, have less than twenty thousand population. So that's the big, that's the big difference. Down in, down in Charleston, I was just talking to a couple legislators yesterday about this. Down in Charleston, they design everything they do for the majority of the counties, which is counties with less than twenty thousand population. Well, that hurts us, 'cause we can't then do what we need to do to deal with. So I, I, I agree with you, but I'm saying, help us get the legislature to see it as well. Any, anyone else wish to make a comment? Uh, uh, the petitioner, uh, do you have anything further you wanna add?
Um, I'm gonna say one thing. You know, like you brought up Florida, and where the developers, same with California, developers do pay for the roads and the schools. But your house is gonna cost you seven hundred thousand dollars. That's, you know, it's, everybody wants, everybody wants to keep their own little life, and it's gonna be, this is how much my house costs me, but we want from here on, everybody, you know, the price of apartments we go through the roof, the price of, of everything. And then where do you think the developers are gonna get the money? You know, they charge more money for their homes than their apartments. So, I just wanted to say that.
Thank you.
That's important as well.
Yeah, all you have to do is watch the, the House channel when they buy and sell houses, and these little towns are selling houses for seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I know what you're talking about.
The value of my house is going down, down now because of what you're doing.
Yeah, that, that, that's true too, you have the opposite in. All right, okay, I, I'm gonna try to keep control here. If, you just got a compelling thing you wanna say, so I'll let you say it. Go ahead, sir.
I guess I would say that if, uh, if the final price ends up being beyond what the market will bear, then maybe the area shouldn't be developed.
Yeah. Uh, it's a good housing debate, but that's not what we're here for. But I appreciate, I appreciate it, the, the debate got started, and it's well worth debating, but, uh, we'll, we'll move on. Thank you, Mr. Colton. Uh, anything further from the staff?
Uh, I, not on a particular issue, I can address that afterwards. I did wanna address the one gentleman's concern about reviewing plans and that sort of thing.
Yes, please do.
The, the rezoning simply addresses rezoning the property, mending the map.
Right.
Any of the review of plans, how things can be built, laid out, impacts, that sort of thing, that all gets done during the land use permit process. And since this would be a development of significant impact, that would go back before the planning commission, and that's where you would look at issues like stormwater management... management, traffic situations, density, meeting the health requirements, that kind of thing. But that doesn't get addressed in the mapping. This simply deals with, is the land going to be zoned to R three or is the land going to be zoned to R four?
I, I understand that and I, I, I want to, even, I want to, want to clarify for everyone's edification. Even though someone's grandfathered, doesn't mean that they don't have to go through the land use permitting process like you just talked about. Is that not correct?
Well, what they have to do is if they come in and they establish that they're grandfathered, they can do what they laid out that they were going to do as if there was no zoning. So they don't come in and get a new land use permit. But they can't say, well, I was grandfathered in this property and we were going to do, you know, 20 apartments in a year and say, oh, I decided I now want to do a mixed-use development, we'll put commercial in there. No, that wasn't what was grandfathered, that's all new use, new use. And that would have to be, go through the normal process and get the land use permit and that sort of thing. Because we've had several instances where, where we had developers who sort of thought that, well, I'm grandfathered in, I was going to do this so I can now, since I'm grandfathered in, I can do anything I want with property. No, no. You get grandfathered in for what you were intended to do before the ordinance went into effect.
It's not.
But once you're grandfathered in, we cannot impose the, the ordinance act. That's effectively what the grandfathering means. It's a, the fire established non-conforming use. So, you know, even though we may not like the fact that it's zoned R three, but it's being developed at R four density, if they have established that that was going to be an R four development before the ordinance goes in there, they go in and do it. We cannot prevent that by law.
Right. But, but the point I was trying to make clear to everybody is the project is grandfathered, not the land.
Correct.
And you had a compelling question you had to ask too.
I just have a clarifying question about the comment that you just made. He earlier said, well, it's exactly what I want so I can go start building tomorrow. Is that, I'm terrified, he still has to go through this other process.
Absolutely, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. He still has to go through.
Yes.
What he's, what he is determining.
No, he's on the other side.
He's behind you.
Well, Mr. Colton was determined sort of on the fly was that he could do the development he wants to do within the R three designation.
Right.
But he still has to come in, apply for the land use permit. And since it's going to be a development of significant impact based on the density that he's doing, it will have to go through the land use process it does then go through for a plan.
Okay. See, no one else with compelling interest will come, close the public hearing portion and open it up for discussion. Commissioner Bartolo.
Well, if you're satisfied with R three, then there's not a real big question for us to make.
I agree. As long as we.
Well, we can't give you a contingency on that. I mean, if you're saying that you're no longer requesting movement from R three to R four, I mean, we need to know what you're saying. We can't, we can't give you a, well, if.
I'm okay with R three as long as the numbers are correct and we just.
Yeah, we have no way of knowing that now. So I, that's what I'm asking you. Do you, you want to withdraw your request or do you want to pursue?
I will withdraw.
Okay.
Because I don't want to put high-density in there anyways. I don't want to, and these people are right. Developers can't handle high-density, but 1,000 beds up there in that hill. I mean, I don't know how the people would get down the hill. So I, I do agree with all this. But, you know, I'm going to put a few apartments in there, but it won't be many, but it won't be 1,000 beds, you know?
Those that meets the R three.
So I'm okay with R three, but I will go to their office tomorrow and sit down with them without my engineer in here.
And you know, there's a, there's an observation here that, that has to be made. And unfortunately, it falls on the planning commission, is that we've got a number of residents sitting here who pass zoning in their neighborhood. And what they said when they passed that zoning is we want this neighborhood protected. Now, it doesn't appear that they're getting the protections that they want that have to come to this extent. And luckily, Mr. Colton is reasonable to adjust his request. Not that it would be approved, I, I can't say it would be approved or disapproved, but, but I think you're willing to do that and resolves the immediate issue. The land use still remains. And, and my question and challenge to the planning commission is how much will quality of life play in that issuance of a land use permit? No, you know, I'm not trying to influence the, the decision on a land use permit, but I think we all need to know, can you deny Mr. Colton's request based upon a land use permit if he doesn't comply with quality of life issues with water runoff and traffic and those kind of issues?
Yeah, all of those are taken into consideration. Now, what, what you have to understand is sort of the converse of that. If you're meeting all of those requirements stipulated in the ordinance and you are addressing land use and you have documented that you are addressing traffic or that the traffic situation is not significantly worsened by your development, then you're hard-pressed to not issue the land use permit.
The, the only thing I, I think we need to make sure, no disrespect to the developers, we need to make sure that the people who live in this county have protections of quality of life. And if that means we need to adjust our mapping, our zoning, or the land use regulations, we need to do that. We need to ensure quality of life takes precedent over development to the excess because we all know that there is development to the excess in West Run. Everyone knows that. That's, that's a given. But I guess that's my challenge. We need, we need to explore that. And since I sit on the planning commission, I'll bring it up again at, at the planning commission meeting, but the, it seems like the only controls that the community has here is the land use. I don't know if you agree with that or not. Yeah, it's, well, you can't do anything about the past, but certainly can do something about the future. We don't have to let bad get worse.
Yeah, right.
Right now, you have one land use control zone and you have it in one portion of the county. That's what you've got.
Right.
Anywhere else, there's no building inspection code enforcement, there's no subdivision regulations, there's no.
No ordinance, etc.
Side ordinances, no other land use controls here.
But could we, and I guess I'm playing devil's advocate here, could we, is when we outlined the zoning maps and the zoning areas, could we have looked at areas and minimized the development in some areas so it would not affect the water runoff, the traffic, the law enforcement, those kinds of things?
Well, I believe to some extent that was done. That's why some areas have lower density than other than areas. Bakers Ridge, for example, has a lot of single-family and a range of single-family uses in part because there's no water and sewer out there. So there was not the facilities to be high-density out there. So that was taken into consideration. Now, granted, I was not here when that whole process was going on, but I do know that the, the land use map was predicated on essentially two factors. One, the kind of issues you were talking about, and two, the fact that the vast majority of the district was already developed to some extent or the other. So it ended up being an existing use, land use map as opposed to based on a future land use map. In the, in the best of all worlds, when you're doing land use planning, you have a future land use map and that's what you project your zoning on. Well, since this area was pretty well-developed to begin with, you were kind of working off an existing use as opposed to a future use.
The only other suggestion I would have is, Mr. Colton, when you apply for this land use permit, if, I, I think everybody would appreciate it if you would address those issues. So it's clear, a clear understanding how.
When you talk about drainage, any developer that is out of the mug jurisdiction for the retention system is a fool to do a development without a retainage. You know, not a 100-year or 50-year, but maybe a 10-year or 20-year retaining, where you put big pipe on the ground and you retain the water, it doesn't drain on the acre yard. Because if you don't do that, you're going to get sued by somebody, you know? And it's very difficult to do it afterwards, you know, when the roads are already there. So I just built a bunch of apartments not too long ago off of Sturstown Road and we're in a mug jurisdiction to put drainage for, and we did and it, it cost me $250,000 to put drains in the bottom of that parking lot. And, but I tell you what, there's no problem. It all drains out of the one-foot park.
And that's all I have.
Yes, ma'am. You've got just compelling interest.
I do, I do. I respectfully would ask that this body make a judgment on the R four to R three, even if you say now, if you pull it back because of precedents. I would like it noted that this has been discussed if you're going, you know, and a judgment was made.
I appreciate that. I understand what you're saying and I understand why you're saying it too. Commissioner Blum.
Yeah, just a couple of things. I think we're in a unique situation and it, it's just very frustrating. First of all, you have Mr. Colton who, there's no doubt about, in our minds, I think that, you know, you want to do the right thing and the best thing for you, but also the community. At the same time, I guess we're hesitant and because you're, and you're being also scrutinized for the same reasons, that we've had a number of unscrupulous land developers, that's the best, nicest way I could put it, and who are still out there. And that's what worries, I mean, what worried me immediately was, I believe you were probably going to do that five-acre unit, but I've been here long enough with the city council that what happens is you do it, but then say, God forbid, something happens to you, someone comes in and the rest of the land is all R four, well, you know, that's what happens. So, so understand, that's, that's where the concern, so, you know, it, it's really sad that we have to deal with this, but being in the county and the city, this is one of my frustrating parts because in the city, and this is the thing that, to answer your question, and this is the hardest thing for me to get used to. In the city, we control the roads.
True.
In the county, we control zero roads. So when you were talking about, worrying about, you know, roads and, that's frustrating because we can't do anything about it. Now, we're working on doing something about it and that's what we're trying to get the legislature saying. It is ridiculous that you have all these roads that we have no control over, but they're trying to develop and we can't even say anything to try and work out a compromise. And, and that's where the problem is. What frustrates me is that, and, and then, and I guess it's on your side, that, you know, he went through this process and you're all here now giving up a couple hours, you went through the planning and there were, I wish we hadn't got to this point. Because if, if it sounds like you could have done what you wanted to do in R three, this, we'd be forced for a land use when we deal with that. So hopefully that will work out. And the final thing was saying, I'm thinking what you said. I know he pulled it. However, I think you're right.
We have to.
I think you're right. I, I would like to go through to set a precedent and I want to also compliment him at the same time saying, he's willing to work, but I agree with you. I would like to, just since we've gone through the process and even though we know he's pulling it, we'd still go through the process and vote for the recommendation, if that's okay with you.
I was going to tell you procedurally how we can do that.
Good, oh, okay.
We don't have to accept his withdrawal. We could just, basically, we, if you wanted to withdraw it, technical, procedural.
Yeah.
Of a, of a governmental body or, or a court, we have to vote to allow him to withdraw it. So if we deny his withdrawal, then we vote on the merits of the original case.
Right.
So I was just going to explain to you.
Okay, thanks.
Procedurally how, how we would go about it.
Right.
Mr. Colter might not even want to withdraw it now, just let us vote.
Yeah, I don't think you, yeah.
So he withdrew his withdrawal.
Yeah.
So that eliminates, that just eliminates some other votes and motions.
I would move that we deny the request for R four.
Second.
I have a motion and second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed.
Could I ask one thing? Could we have a report from you after you meet with him, just so we're updated on what happened? I think that would be very.
I promise you, I will bring the plat before we start.
Okay, but just so we know that it's moving forward, whatever, so everyone at least is on the same wavelength, so we know, because I think half the time it's just getting the correct information so you know what's going on, so you're not surprised. Okay, that would be great.
Yes, to your, your question, yes.
Okay. Well, you just have to send us a memo.
But also understand that because this is a development of significant impact, there will be a public hearing process and it will all be discussed before the planning commission, all these people will have an opportunity to attend that meeting.
Yeah, now that's fine. And if you just give us that, so then everyone knows, you know, what is the process.
I, I think he's telling us that if you want to hear it firsthand, go to the public hearing.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Colter. Thank you, thank you, Rich Patricia. I just want to emphasize why people are here. And Mr. Colter, I want you to hear this as well. I contend that the solution to our problems can exist right here in Montague County if we can work together, residents, develops, business, private, private entity, public entities, work together to make the legislature allow us to run our own county. That, that's what I hope we can all agree on and we work the legislature to, to let us run Montague County because we're not a work county and we need that, we need the laws and, and the rights to run our own county. Yes, sir.
Can the county, I know the city's talking about home rule.
Yes. I, yes, I advocated, I advocated that last, last, thank you, Mr. Colter. I advocated that last session and basically the majority of them laughed at, at me. They're like, you're crazy, we're not going to let the counties run things. Yes.
Patricia, maybe you can help me with this. After the last meeting, I went down and spoke with them because I do have concerns about the roads and I recognize that it's not there, but there's a gentleman in your office, Patricia. That would be Phil Austin? Yes.
Yes.
They're working with the state to represent our needs.
He's the head, he's, he's the head of MPO, Morgantown, Montague.
Yeah, MPO.
And he was very kind to speak with me. I'm trying to get together a group of homeowners to help support him, but that is a very good place to start about roads. It does take everybody.
Yeah, we, basically, he's in a, basically, he's in a, just for your edification, ma'am, ma'am, just for your edification, basically, he's an employee of Montague and Morgantown.
I think that's what he, he explained.
Right. Because we, we have to have a planning organization in order to qualify for federal funds. That's, that's why he's there.
And our big problem, and you mentioned it, our biggest problem is we are over 100,000. We're very successful, but the people, the majority of the people who vote down in Charleston represent the 20,000, 30,000. We almost need to distinguish in some way, given us, kind of like the football where they're looking at a five, you know, rather than, you know, division, one more division up for just the counties.
Well, there's like 13 counties that have less than 10,000.
Yeah, and that's the problem. That's what we're working on. Hopefully, we'll get there.
And he explained that we were kind of equal.
Yes.
To all those and, you know, in the state side.
Yeah.
But not so much in our league.
Nor funding we get.
Okay, thank you. As you, as you can tell, we try to be as liberal and give everyone an opportunity to speak, but we need to move on at this point. Okay. We got that, that, I'm going through here, make sure what we missed. Okay, apartments to boards and authorities. We have a group of boards and authorities that are, that we've interviewed and came up with. We don't have a list, you're going to read it to us?
I just want to, I think it's been one of the two commissioners to read and make the motion as you go.
Sure.
Yeah, they'll be fine, yeah. Yeah, they'll be fine, yeah. Either one.
That's what I get for sitting on this.
That's for you being the oldest.
Okay, Montague County Board of Health, Point Tony D.
Dickey Akio.
Dickey Akio, she's a Republican, Eastern District, and her term would expire June the thirtieth, two thousand eighteen.
It's a motion.
I would move that we approve the appointment of her.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed.
Montague County Building Commission, Kyle Haught, term to expire June the thirtieth, two thousand eighteen, and I would move that we appoint him.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed.
Montague County Development Authority, reapportment of Michael Callen, reapportment of James Gaston, reapportment of Dave Yoder, and reapportment of Ron Justice, and all those terms would expire May fifth, two thousand sixteen, and I would move that they be appointed.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passed.
And then we have new appointments to the Montague County Development Authority, Dave McCormick Jr., Mike Saffsack, and Pat Martin, and McCormick's would expire two thousand fourteen, as well as Mike Saffsack, two thousand fourteen, and Pat Martin's would be two thousand fifteen, and I would move those three appointments.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed.
Montague County Planning Commission, reapportment of Joe Kaler and Joe Panico, terms to expire March thirty first, two thousand sixteen.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed.
New appointments to the Montague County Planning Commission, would move that Nancy Jamison and Michael Mills, Nancy Jamison's term to expire March thirty first, two thousand sixteen, Michael Mills' term to expire March thirty first, two thousand fifteen, I'd move that they be approved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
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 Chief.
Motion passed.
Chief View Public Service District, reapportment of Edward Grimes, term to expire March thirty first, two thousand sixteen, reapportment of Glenn Stadden, term to expire March thirty first, two thousand eighteen, and I would move that those appointments be approved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Okay, that's the boards and authorities, and we still got openings, and we're still interviewing, so we'll keep plugging along.
We might want to mention what boards we still have open.
Do you have a list of those, Diane, with you?
They're all on the website, but we do have one Deputy Sheriff's Civil Service Commission, that's a county commission appointee, Mason Dixon, Stork Park one, the Abandoned and Deleaded Property Enforcement Agency one, the four H Camp Monthly Advisory Board, there are five vacancies on that. And we do have a couple of terms coming up on the Clay Patel and the Devers Creek PSDs, with those terms coming up and expired. Other than that, we're very well caught up.
Yay.
Good, sounds good. Okay, any other new business? Okay, hearing done, reports from county commissioners, Commissioner Bartolo.
Yeah, I just want to share with you, I got contacted, and have talked to a couple people, by an elderly gentleman out on Grafton Road, and he pointed out to me that Clinton District doesn't have a senior center out there around the fire department area, and I suggested Tryun, and he said that was too far. He said he was eighty-six years old, and that was too far for him to go to Tryun. And I need input, we need input from someone who knows a little bit more about locations here and residency, in terms of, you know, is Tryun too far for him to go? There was another one, was it Brown's Chapel?
Brown's Chapel, used to have.
How close that is to.
I don't know who owns that, I don't know who owns that school now.
I thought about exploring, and maybe Clinton District would, Fire Department might work out a little deal to provide a meeting space for those people in Clinton District, to see if they can come together and organize to form a new community senior center, and then we could get involved and help find a location for them to meet. But I just share that.
Yeah. Tryun's kind of far out there, from Clinton, Ridgedale School and the Goschen Road there, it's about as close to come to Senior Mons as it is to get to Tryun, that's about the middle, so, you're sort of stuck in the worst place either way you go.
And I mentioned to him the Senior Mons, now, he was in Kroger, so I know he can, he can get around. He can't say I'm homebound or need, need help, so.
Well, that's, that's something that I would be welcome if they want to look into.
I think, yeah.
Commissioner Bartolo, or Commissioner Bloom, I'm sorry, you're over here.
Here I am.
As some of you might have heard, I retired today after seven thousand two hundred and forty-five days at University High School and Morgantown High School as a guidance counselor. And I say that I was extremely surprised and humbled when I opened the doors to leave, the students had made a human tunnel as I exited the doors, chanting positive names. You never know, you never know, giving flowers, dark chocolate candy, which they found out in balloons. So at first, I wanted to say it was just really classy, and I'm appreciative. And as I would say, I look forward to the new challenge that awaits me, knowing that I did my best, planting seeds for the future, and being grateful for the many people that I've met, and the things that I've learned from them and my students. I will continue to work to help the faculty and students be treated with the respect and dignity that they have earned, and to monitor the educational funding from the central office. And it's been a great ride with thousands of students, parents, exchanging ideas, problems, and hardships, and joys. And finally, I just want to add that I did wear my Halloween costume one day early. This is the first time I have ever worn a suit with shoes, for the first time in the last thirty-six years. So, I'm real excited about now working with you all, and I guess now I can attend some more of those morning meetings. And I look forward to working with you all, moving Montague County forward. I think it's an exciting time with the Tiff District, with a lot of the development that's going on, with a lot of the education programs that are going on, and I think it's one heck of a good time to live in Montague County. And that's, I'll be positive.
I, I just.
Oh, thank you.
I would just like to say that I'm very glad you'll be able to attend all the meetings, but, but, you know, I've had so many empty chair jokes, that's just gonna go by the wayside, I guess.
I know.
I was always talking to Commissioner Bloom, the empty chair.
Same thing to Vanna's.
That's what he's gonna do now. I appreciate that, well, I really don't have anything, so let's move on to elected officials. Sheriff, you have anything for us?
I do. It's a little late, because I was in certain court testifying on a mistake that I got lucky enough to be assigned. Breaking news that we have, as everybody knows, the courthouse was broken into this morning, a lot of damage was done. Because of the excellent work of our detective unit, and Deputy Broker, and our court security officers, happy to announce that just probably forty-five minutes ago.
Wow.
An arrest was made of Apollonio Fernandez Jr. He's been charged with breaking and entering, felony destruction of property. Deputy Broker was able to review the videotape from the courthouse, which led to he and the detectives getting a search warrant, conducted a search, and actually found, there was only one piece of equipment, which was a router, that was actually taken from the building, was still in his possession, but it was in bad shape. So that was, that was recovered, and probably the happiest news, and I know we all talk about regional jail deals, and I don't like them any better than anybody else, but he was arraigned before Magister Holt Pitt, our favorite person today, and his bond was set at a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, and he is happily in the region. So that's, that's.
Everybody's happy now.
Right. I, I just, well, I can't comprehend, you know, and I'm sure you all, with all your years of experience, what in the world you breaking in the courthouse for, to mess it up? I mean, that's just idiotic craziness.
You just have to mark it off to more criminal behavior, because there's so much of it, that's crazy and doesn't make sense.
Right.
I don't know if this is the right time, but both Bill and I were talking, and both of us were under the understanding it was a mistake of us, for some reason, we thought on that door that they broke in was an emergency alarm, or something like that, and we didn't realize that there aren't any emergency alarm doors on there. And I know you're gonna be reviewing, I know it's really unfortunate it happened, but it also fortunately happened that no one got hurt, and it was a minor, minor in the sense of what was taken in this damage. But I hope again, that, you know, I know we're gonna look at the situation again, I know a number of the community said, well, why are we doing this? Well, here's a perfect example why. And one of the things that came up, as I was talking to some people, and I was just wondering, you know, when you walk down the street, and you can look into the finance office, and you can see the people, I don't want to, you know, doing their business, okay? Do we need to consider something on the windows, so maybe we can look out, so people can't look in to see, and entice individuals doing stupid things? I mean, that's, I just want to throw that, and I don't know if there's any other ones, but we were very fortunate he didn't get upstairs, into the files, and which also, the other thing that we had brought up was the discussion about leaving the courthouse open, or allowing it for, you know, again, we had talked about that for lawyers, and/or the other thing which I also want to throw out, and I, again, this is again, to be discussed, I would hope maybe at a later time, is, I know on Mondays, we leave the courthouse open till, for two extra hours in the winter time, and I'm wondering if maybe.
No, it's always open, because we're supposed, we're supposed to have it open in the evening.
Okay, but no one else, from my understanding, a lot of the other counties don't do that.
Preston County's Thursday night, Marion County's Thursday night, Harrison County is Friday night. I, they all do, they all do it.
Okay, I was just like that no, what kind of, I'd like to see what, if they're keeping a study, or how many people actually use it during that time? I'd be interested down the road to look at, I know we may not be able to, but I think, you know, maybe we need to promote it more, maybe, you know, so that people can come down, but I'd like it, just everything to be reconsidered, and I'll open that to the other two of you, because, you know, we hate to do this, but it was at the right time when we have started to make the changes. It's very fortunate that it was only that situation and not others, so I don't know.
I've talked with Mr. Doyle.
Okay.
And he may have some comments when we get around to it here, about some things that he might be looking at.
Yeah, you weren't here last week, but Gary White is gonna be our chief security officer.
Okay.
He's gonna be looking at all the cameras and the situation and everything.
Okay, great, yeah, with one of those apps and charities.
He and the sheriff both talked about that last week.
Oh, okay, it was one of those apps and charities, will not happen again.
No, that's all right, no problem, bringing up the speed.
Thank you.
Assistant Music, Mr. Music, do you have anything, sir?
No, sir, I don't.
Ms. Blaney, do you have anything?
Yes, if, the, there was a message around about flu shots, and I would just bring it to the commissioner's attention, that since the Affordable Care Act was passed in two thousand and eleven, our high mark was required to comply with Affordable Care Act, which now covers the flu shot.
Oh, good.
Any employee that has health care coverage with us, their flu shot, even though it's not covered under our policy, would be covered by Highmark, because it's a preventative care under the Affordable Care Act. And so I think that the signup sheet, that was that you all were gonna pay for a flu shot.
Yeah, we felt it was a wellness, part of a wellness program.
Yeah.
Well, you could pay for those part-time people who do not have, are not covered under our insurance, but anyone covered under our insurance would be able to go obtain a flu shot at Med Express, and it would be covered by Highmark, or if they would go to the regular doctor, it would be covered. And that would include them, their family, if they had family covered.
What about, what about, if you go to the health department, the insurance cover that?
I don't believe, the health department is not an in-service provider.
Okay, that's what I was.
Policy, just, so I don't believe that they would cover that. It has to be an in-service provider, if you go to a pharmacy, and to get it at Walgreens, Giant Eagle, you would pay the upfront cost, and then you could get reimbursed.
Oh, good.
If they applied to the insurance. But if you would walk into an in-service provider like Med Express, or your, your personal doctor, they would fill it automatically, and there would be no upfront cost.
Well, yeah, we'll need to rethink that, that's very good to know. I, I think it's important that everyone gets a flu shot, so I'm very much in favor of the part-time people, as you suggested.
Absolutely, part-time people are the ones who are now seeking, you know, the different health plans through Affordable Care Act.
Right.
So that, of course, has been delayed by the federal government now until March of next year. But they would be the ones with the immediate need to get coverage, because they would not have access to getting it covered by another means.
And it brings up something else that we probably need to talk about, well, we need to look into for future, not to talk about right now, is with the Affordable Care Act, and given what Madame Clerk just said, the health department, with exchanging Affordable Care and all that, the health department needs to be looking at whether they should be qualified and what they should be doing, because all these people that they were servicing in the past, now under the new act, are gonna have some sort of coverage. So I'm just saying that we need to maybe be proactive with the health department, and say, what are you actually doing? What service you actually, and are you doing things that, that the Affordable Care Act will, would otherwise pay for, but for you spending county money to do it? That's, that's my suggestion, do you agree with that?
I agree, definitely.
Okay, any other elected officials here? Okay, Diane, you got anything for it? Bob, you got anything?
Yeah, I'd just like to thank the sheriff's department, from Chief Palmer, down to Detective Lipscomb, and all the court security officers, for everything that they did for us today, on keeping that first lower level secured, until they got all the information they needed to make that arrest, so, now's all we gotta do, is put the building back together, and we'll be wherever we was, but this was one of those freak accidents that, I don't care where you had cameras or alarms, it was gonna happen, I mean, this guy was pretty well intoxicated, and you got tap can vors on the doors. So he broke the window and got in that way. And.
Maybe he thought he was going home, he's climbing into his apartment.
I don't think he knew where it was going. But it's probably one of those things that is gonna happen, I mean, it's.
Yeah, some things gain at the top, so.
And you can prepare for anything, but we had plenty of cameras, and Carrie had cameras in her office where they broke into, and only they would get that video.
Well, they got in Carrie's office, too.
And that was about the lower level.
Oh, the lower level.
But there is some things we can look at, we can talk about at work session, we can, we can move a, that somebody cleaning doors and everything at night times, we can at least, we can have somebody in the, in the building. I don't think it's time that we make any drastic changes, just because of first incident right this minute, but we can put somebody in, or we can have somebody on the floor, at least in the building, twenty-four seven.
Okay, thank you. Renetta, you have anything? Jambi, you have anything? Okay, comments from the public? Yes, ma'am.
All right.
Hi, our spokesman had to leave, which means me, but I'm Barbara Lynn, from the OCU Property Owners Association.
Okay.
You may have recognized us, we've been here before, last time you acted to address the public health issue in the OCU property development, and I'd like to thank you for that rapid action you took. And we are pleased with the work most done so far, to get a resolution to this problem, but in the meantime, more work is being pursued on the hill, dirt's being drownd up there, and we just, in light of the fact that the Army Corps of Engineers has a certain authority over the bally, and that's going to slow down. has asserted authority over the gully, and that's going to slow down remediation, and funding will take some time to procure, and Culver has already determined to be inadequate, we would like to say that we would appreciate you considering our correspondence of earlier this week, requesting a stop work order up there until such time as we are able to prevent there from being additional impact on that sewage and stormwater issue that's currently we're experiencing already.
You, you sent us a letter on that?
Yes, we did.
Okay.
It was discussed earlier, and we referred it to Rich Wood to, to see if that's something that could happen, because-
Oh, that's right.
West Run, it, it's in West Run, right?
Yes.
Right. Okay.
They said that they didn't think there was any authority that they had to do anything, and we were putting in the West Virginia Code, and it looks like to us that they do have the authority to stop work on that.
Maybe what we need to do is refer to Phil Baker.
Yeah.
And, and tell him, just bring him up to date on what's happened, and ask him if he concurs or disagrees according to-
Did your, did your letter include the reference to that code section? You say that you think it, that it does, okay.
I have it here to give you. I have it here.
Okay.
All right. That was something we were gonna discuss today?
Yes.
That was something we're gonna discuss today in work session.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any further comments from the public? Yes, Kelly?
I get the sheriff's attention, but I just wanted to remind everybody that the tax lien sale is next Monday, and it will be right here in this room, and the last day for taxpayers to bring their payments in is Friday, November the first. We're on the second postmark at that time, the payment actually has to be in the office and processed.
So, even though it's postmarked on November 1st?
Yeah, it won't count.
Won't count, okay. Thank you. Any further comments from the public? I have a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. We're adjourned. 10-minute break, and then we'll start work session.
And for clarification, the next meeting is at 10:00.
10:00.
Okay.